Good evening. We welcome you here tonight. We call to order the regular meeting in the West Valley City Council. We note that all council members are participating tonight here in our council meeting. And as has become our tradition, we will begin with an inside the city video.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Fox. I'm the Fire Marshal for the West Valley City Fire Department. I'm here with my buddy Benson to talk a little bit about fire safety for the upcoming holiday season. Safety in the kitchen is very important. During the holiday season, we spend a lot of time in the kitchen cooking and making a lot of goodies and treats. And unfortunately, that's an area in our home where more fires occur during the holidays. And in the kitchen, you're three times more likely to have a fire or some injury or problems in the kitchen because it's such an active place. One of the things we want to stress is that anytime you're in the kitchen cooking, please remain in the kitchen. Anytime you're cooking on top of the stove, and if you have to leave for any reason, turn the stove top off. It's very important to keep little children out of the kitchen, especially when you're cooking. A lot of injuries happen when the stove is left unattended. It can still be very hot. So we want to be very careful that our children don't get hurt or injured. We want you to make sure the stove top is clear of any flammable items such as dish towels or things like that where they could cause a problem. Keep the cook area clean and free from any type of objects that could catch fire. If there is a fire on the stove top, remain calm, turn the heat off, and leave the home and call 911. So it's important to keep the floors clean and uncluttered so you don't have any spills or slips or falls. Also, whenever you're cooking, try not to have any loose clothing that could come in contact with open flames. It's always smart to have a fire extinguisher close by in case there is a kitchen fire and also make sure that your smoke detectors work properly. So these fire tips that we talked about are very important for you and your family, but we have other family members that we want to make sure are safe also this holiday season, your pets. It is important to make sure that your pets are safe and only eat healthy things. For example, turkey bones are not good to feed your dogs because they're soft and it's very possible that they could choke on those turkey bones. Also garlic and onions are not good for pets. So any foods that have onions or garlic in them, please don't feed those to your pets. Finally, your pets should stay out of the kitchen always. You don't want them walking around your feet while you're cooking or moving pots and pans around the kitchen. So keep those pets out of the kitchen also. It's for their safety and also for yours. One more important safety tip is to make sure when you're cooking with pots on the stove, that the handles are turned in so you can't hit them or kids can't pull them off and cause burns and injuries. And if you're deep frying your turkey this year, don't drop it in in hot oil because it will cause a fire. Be safe. Well, thank you for joining us today. We hope you have a wonderful, happy, healthy, and safe holiday season.
Well done. Timely information. Appreciate that. We'll go down our agenda here. Our minutes of November 16th, we need to take action on those.
I move for approval of our minutes.
Second?
Moved and seconded, properly forced then without objection, the minutes will be approved. During the objection, the minutes are approved and that was unanimous. Next, we go to our comment period. Is there anyone online for our public comment period?
No, sir.
Okay. We do have one person who signed up. Is this person here to speak just on something or are they concerned about the application on 3200 West? It's D.J. S. It's, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Are you, are you here for a public comment or for the public hearing on the land on 32nd West? Comment? Okay, then we're ready for that.
You know, you write so fast. My name is D.J. Heslington. I live in Coventry Manor apartment or condos, sorry. And I had actually addressed the council a few weeks ago regarding the sidewalks and the need for making sure that they're safe. And there's, there's a piece of sidewalk that had just a fraction of, I don't even know if it was even an inch high, that I tripped over and that I fell and broke my foot, my toe. I had to have surgery on my toe. And then also landed on my face. And if I could, can I show you the damage that that fall did?
If you'll give them to our recorder so that they'll be noted there.
My concern is what if it was a kiddo? What if it was a little one just going on the way, their way to school? And then trip and fall. And I know that kids do trip and fall all the time, you know, and they usually pick themselves back up and dust them off and they're off playing again. But I was, I was just walking at a normal gait. I wasn't running. I wasn't doing anything other than trying to get to my home. And then Lindy Sue had also mentioned, if I could quote her, how when she was passing out flyers, that she met with a lot of uneven sidewalk. And when I had asked before I spoke and even after, I was told that it takes a long time to find people who are, get a contract and negotiate prices and that find people willing to do the work. And I just, I don't, I just hope it doesn't take too long. Because, you know, especially now that the kiddos are going to school when it's maybe dark outside. And I just, I just want to emphasize how much it's impacted my life. I have to have another surgery on my face due to this fall. I also had already had a neck surgery with a plate in my back. And when I fell, the, one of the screws actually is putting pressure on my spinal cord. So I deal with numbness and tingling all on my left side. And I have to have an ultrasound in my head to see if there was any damage because of that. And I'm not trying to make you feel sorry for me. I don't want you to feel sorry for me. I'm just saying that it's not a small thing, that, you know, it's, it's not like, I mean, I understand that there are other more pressing issues, but when does this get to the top of the line? I mean, I know that we're, we don't have enough police officers. I know that that's, you know, an issue too. And there's time that it takes to recruit and to train police officers. But during that time, couldn't we find one piece of sidewalk that we could fix, just one? And just so that, that it looks like, you know, we're doing the best, I mean, that we're trying, I guess, is what my frustration is, is that, and I'm sure that you could probably tell him a doer. Not one who talks about doing something and then not doing it. So I guess that's my point of view. I'm not saying that's what you guys are doing, but that's my point of view. It's like, let's just do it. Just, you know, start today kind of thing. And if I was disrespectful, I would sincerely apologize.
Okay. Thank you very much. Was there anyone else to speak tonight? Yes, Mr. Vsok, come forward.
I keep word up here. Jim Vsok. Address is on file. I think it's time, and it might be happening behind the scenes with Mr. Pyle and his people. But it's time to start talking about a sustainable living wage for West Valley City employees. Salt Lake County, now whether they passed it or not, I didn't get to see the end of their meeting. But they've made a $15 sustainable living wage as their minimum. Whether it passed or not, like I said, I didn't get to finish watching their, their meeting. There was something that came out today or yesterday from the housing that an average one bedroom apartment in Salt Lake County, the person would have to be making $15 and some change. I don't remember the exact change in order to afford that one bedroom apartment. A two bedroom apartment's over $20 an hour. Hopefully, West Valley will be a leader and take that step and pay our employees a fair wage so that they can live in our city that they work in. I think it's interesting, all city offices are closed on Thanksgiving, which is great, but the Family Fitness Center is open. So we're forcing employees to work on a holiday. They should be home with their, with their families. I was kind of surprised and I even looked two or three times. I thought maybe there was misinformation on their site. And as of today, it said they are open specifically, they said Thanksgiving Day for several classes and stuff. Somebody's bright decision to change the trash pickup over Centennial Park. I brought up Travis cleaning up the skate park and the bike park. He does that on a regular basis. He goes out there, picks up the trash and usually about a bag a day. Pickup used to be on Mondays, and so when the cans are full, they'd be picked up on Monday. Well, now somebody's bright idea to change it to Thursday. When do our parks use the most, especially when we have halfway decent weather, Saturday and Sundays? Why aren't they, why isn't the trash being picked up? Because now cans get dumped over. And it's a regular thing that cans get dumped over. The maintenance guys now are being forced to move cans around to try and hide them, keep them chained up. Of course, the kids find them. It's causing more of a problem. I know this is probably a seasonal thing, but on the last few years, it stayed nice later. And I think that's something they need to go back to a Monday pickup and that would help out and keep our, our parks clean and specifically Centennial. And then I just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to all you guys. Hopefully, everybody has some great time with their family. And I will see you guys December 7th, I believe, is our next meeting after this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seen no one else, then we will close the public comment and bring it back here. Our city manager, any comments tonight?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, council members, any comments?
I have one, Mayor. Thank you. Thanksgiving is one of my best holidays, you know, I love it when I came over here. I take a moment to want to share with the things I am grateful for. I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with you for a number of years, like Jake and Karen, Steve and Mayor and Don and Lars. I know we have some differences, but we try to do our best. And our goal is we try to make the city, this community is a better community. That's our goal. And I'm grateful for that, for opportunity to, to work with you over the years, you know, so I'm grateful for the opportunity to visit people last summer, door to door. I know it's a, I, I'm still behind with the mayor. He packed lunch to do that, but I haven't packed lunch yet. But I'm grateful to have opportunity to visit them and to talk to them on their front yard or driveway or even on a street. I learned a lot from them and I'm grateful for their encouragements and they're very touching. And I appreciate that. I treasure that moment. So I hope they, they're gonna have a good Thanksgiving, every one of them. But tonight, I want to spend a little bit of time with my, my friend here, Steve Builder and Ron Biglow, Mayor. The, their term is gonna be ended by the month of December. So I just want to take a moment and I hope the council and all my, I very fortunate, very blessed to work with Steve Builder over the years. We sit down multiple times and we discuss about things in the city and we try to work together and try to put things together and, and move forward for our city. And I'm grateful for his patience and his thoughtful consideration. And when I was struggling and then he helped me out. And I appreciate that very much. Willing to, to jump in and to give me advice and assist me. And that was just American. I treasure that, that relationship. And I hope he continue to do well with his life and active in community and help the, the city. Ron Biglow, brother, the same. When I was down, he lifted me up. We talk a lot. We work a lot. We sat down a lot. And July says earlier, just our goal, the, the basics things we want to do is to want to, to do, to make the city better. That's all we try to do. And I know the city is a potential. It has potential. And I know sooner or later, we're gonna be, you know, one of the best city in this valley. And I, I hope that gonna be and I believe gonna be. We, we are going in that direction and we continue to do well. And I believe it's gonna do well and move forward for the future of our city and things will go well for our city. And the same thing with Mayor Ron Biglow. Just, I wish it's the best endeavor. He's a very good guy. July says, oh, but to Steve, he was American. You know, I just said multiple times before, I ran into good people and I am surrounded with the good people. Help me and give me opportunity to learn from them and grow and be a good person and continue to be a good person. So I wish them the best. But with the ladies, it came up earlier tonight. I would love to have a small budget, maybe $20,000 or something, or maybe $50,000. So something like emergency, like a case. We can help out and try to do something with that. Or people, they have a sidewalk problem. I said I was still builder before and the lady she just fell, you know, the same situation, just this lady she did. Fell off and got a big medical bill. And I think something like that, we need to help them out with the sidewalk. Not about medical bill, but with the sidewalk. So I hope we can bring it up when we have a meeting here sometime in January so we can do something about it. But thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Any more comments? Well, I have comments, but I'll reserve them for in a couple of weeks when I get closer to retirement. Thank you. With that, we will now address our agenda of regular items. We have a public hearing on an issue. This is on application GPZ-14-2021 filed by Brad Reynolds. This is on property at 3554 South 3200 West. In conjunction with this, we will consider three items. Ordinance 21-63, which is a general plan change. Ordinance 21-64, a zoning change. And resolution 21-189, a development agreement. 3.2 acres of land. The proposal is to build some units there, townhomes, 37 units. And they'll each have a two car garage and driveway long enough to park two vehicles in. They're about a minimum of 1,550 square feet. They'll have a half finished, excuse me, a half basement finished. Kind of get that right. It won't be half finished. It's a half basement that's finished. It's so easy to state what you think it is and have it come out different. Anyway, this is a developer who's done other projects in the city. So with these changes, that's probably enough introduction unless anyone wants to make any further comments on that. Then we will open the public hearing portion and invite anyone who has come to speak to this issue specifically. Now, this isn't an open public comment. This is specifically to this one project. Is there anyone here to speak to this? Yes, come forward then.
Daryl Curtis, 3860 South Marsha Drive. One of the concerns I have is, is parking at these, where you have multiple townhomes. I, I live out by Winco and the Winco apartments. The streets are just packed with cars. And so it's clear that there was not a plan in place, or if there was a plan in place, it didn't accommodate for the number of vehicles. When I was walking around in some neighborhoods, I saw in some houses and some of the neighbors were concerned. They had seven to eight cars that would, where two or three families were living in one house and they had seven or eight cars parked on the streets and everywhere else. And so where you have this, this, I know it's a medium density and that's great. I think the townhomes are wonderful. I, I like that so much better and I, people that I talk to like that so much better than apartments. But the parking is not going to be sufficient, even if you have just four, because you could have two or three families in those, in those duplexes. And in those duplexes, when you have two or three families, that's going to be about six cars. And I know you have an overflow for 13 vehicles, but that's nothing for that many units that are being planned for this area. So I really think, I think it's great to put something in that area, something similar to this, this project. However, I really would advise a council to really consider the neighborhood and the impact that that's going to make on the neighborhood with the parking and the hassle with that. And, and, you know, 32 South is just going to be a parking lot, or 32 West, sorry, with that. So I just really would like to see greater number of vehicles that can be parked at these, these facilities, at these places of residence than, than fewer. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak to this? Yes, Mr. Vsok.
Jim Vsok, I was in the study meeting and, and heard the proposal of the change. I have the same concern about parking. The, under the original change, there was only four guest parking spot with one of them being handicapped or ADA. So that left three. They've taken away those spots. They've made parking now in every, every driveway. But as we know throughout the city and even you guys, some of you might be guilty of it. I park in my garage. Garage has become a storage area. And so counting those as spots, I know, you know, we got to do that because that's what the code says. But realistically, there's two spots for every one of them. And if you have guests coming over, if you're going to have a barbecue, townhome, people are going to want to have that stuff. There is no place to park. I did ask, there is a rep here about the width of the streets and I was told it's 27 feet. But they're saying there's going to be no parking on the streets. So where are the guests gonna park? 3200 will not have any parking on it. I believe the city will take care of that. So they're gonna end up parking in the bank's parking lot, which is going to cause a problem with them. So we're putting a burden back onto them. The parking is a big, big issue in these developments. Do we need the affordable housing? Absolutely. But we also got to have parking for guests. So take that into consideration tonight when you're voting. And if you need more time, use the avenues, you know, that you guys can do for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seen no one else, then we will. And we didn't have anyone online, did we?
No, sir.
You need to make sure we check that since we've opened that as an option. With that, then we will, oh, there is someone, yes.
I'm the applicant. I don't know if this is the time to get up or not, but.
You, you can, you're welcome. It's open to anyone who wants to speak to this issue.
Great. Yeah, my name's Ryan, Ryan Reynolds. I'm the rep for, for Brad Reynolds. So, you know, addressing those concerns with, with the parking, we, we've upped our parking from a planning commission suggested. Planning commission also suggested that we lower the number of units from 37 to 30. Planning Commission also suggested that we lower the number of units from 37 to 35, which we've done. We're ready to meet all of the conditions that Planning Commission has set forth in the staff report. But we have upped our parking from, it was 3.5 spaces to 2.4 to accommodate for more parking. But you know, we were just, we're excited to be back in West Valley and hopefully to build here. We feel like this is a great piece, a great spot to build these townhomes. You know, affordable housing is something that people are looking for in a housing shortage. And this is a nice product that, you know, isn't going to break the bank in order for you to buy. I think many of you are aware of the project we finished on villages at 27th, just down here. We love to work in the city, would love to come back and, you know, share this product with the community. But is there any questions I can answer for the council? Great. But yeah, just hopefully this can get approved, and we're happy back in West Valley if you'll have us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one else? Then we'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for further discussion or action.
May I have a comment? And that is that when an applicant works on an application and it meets what's required, in this case specifically parking, I don't think it's right for us to deny it for meeting a requirement. I mean, if they've met the requirement for parking, I think that we should approve it. If we don't like the requirement for parking, we ought to up it or change it ourselves and not have it be on a application-by-application basis. And with that, I'll move for approval of ordinance 21-63.
Second. That motion is properly before us. Any further comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I I understand, and I think that you're right to to make that statement about our requirements. And if we have them and they meet them, that that's enough. But, but each situation is unique and dependent on the location. In some other locations, this, that might be enough parking. I just drove by again on my way to this meeting and and I think the parking is going to be a problem. But that people will want to have guests. I mean, that's natural. And there's no place for them to park unless the resident doesn't use their driveway. And I just don't see that as being feasible. I saw the plans last week, and I was really concerned about the the units that didn't even have parking on their driveway. And I was glad that that was fixed. But I was also really concerned last week that there wasn't enough guest parking. And now there's even less. There's nothing. And, and in another neighborhood where there, where there's street parking available, that might be fine. But, but for this area, I don't think that's fine. And and I like the product that this developer makes. And I think this would be a great addition to our city, but I can't approve it the way it's presented right now. I think we need more visitor parking, or it's going to cause a problem later. And that's a problem we can't fix later. Right now is the time to fix that. So if I'm, I'm happy to postpone this vote so that the developer can, can meet that requirement if, if there's others that agree with me. And, and give them another chance at this, because I'd really like them to develop this. But, but I don't want to put a burden on the residents there, the businesses. I think that that's too much.
I'm, I'm thinking the same thing with logs. The reason I asked Steve Patrick earlier today in study meeting about 3200 West, we can park there. But it looked like, you know, like a check today too, is there no room to park on a street? That's I'm concerned about talking, the same thing with the 1300 West is a major problem there when they, they have driveway and two car in, two car out. But still, a lot of people have to park on the street when they visit people in that area and cause a problem for the entrance in the King Point, the subdivision area. When people in that King Point subdivision area, they entrance their area, or they go now in their area. They had a hard time. They have a hard time to, to look left and right. So I'm, I'm really concerned about 3200 West. The road wide enough to park their cars there, I think that'd be just fine. But I think that 3200 West is not wide enough to park their car there and will cause a problem with the America First Grid Union. And I think is they not deserve to do that. I wish, that like Mayor mentioned in a study meeting again, I wish the developer, maybe take, they have right now with the eight apartment complex. If they can take one down and then do that with parking or the green space, and they've been there, it will help a lot. But I don't know, that's going to be profitable for them or not, and that's not a question. So it's tough. But I understand this right now, is we'll have a problem for our city. And I'm very concerned.
Wait, did you see if there was any more comments? Maybe I'll make a general comment, and that is, I do know that we talked in our study meeting about having another discussion on parking in general, because this keeps coming up. And it is not an issue unique to West Valley City. This issue is being dealt with by cities, especially on the Wasatch front, where there's, you know, quite a high density. How should that be dealt with? I don't know. We'll have that discussion. I do know that this particular piece of property has been vacant for a while. And I don't know of another use that this could be for. And the issue won't go away, even if there's some more parking there. I think we'll still be addressing this. A lot of that, because in my neighborhood, okay, my neighborhood, single-family homes, okay? But there's one home in our subdivision that routinely all the time has at least six to eight cars parked there. And as many as, oftentimes at night, there's a dozen or more. And there have been as many as 18. This was not for a party. When it's a party, there are 40 cars up and down the streets. And we are going to have to deal with those. And it's just a fascinating discussion. And no matter what we do, there will be people in our city who are unhappy. If we give more parking, it makes, there are some advantages. There are advantages if you reduce the parking number. I know there are national trends to reduce parking. And I still haven't figured that one out. I've attended their conferences, and I'm just, what? And they say that'll make a walkable community. And I'm like, well, if you want to rebuild your community, or you want to build a new community, that maybe makes sense, but I don't know. So real challenge. So, and as you can see, even the council has different opinions on that. So. Any further comments before we go to the vote? And just so we're clear, Councilman Buehler, do you want to repeat your motion?
My motion was simply to approve ordinance 21-63, amending the general.
Okay. To our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatisa Manu.
No.
Councilwoman Ling.
Nope.
Councilman Buehler.
Hi.
Councilman Hune.
No.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
No.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay. Since that motion failed, that I think it would be wise to consider continuing this item for a couple of weeks, just to give the developer an opportunity to adjust their plans, to make it so that a majority of the council might approve this. They may just walk away, and that'd be fine too, and withdraw the application. But I'd like to give them a chance. So I'll make a motion that we continue this item for two more weeks.
It's a good enough, enough time, the holidays.
Is that enough time, you think?
Well.
Say probably three, four of the holidays would be better for us.
But man.
Let's, let's not set a specific time. And, and when, when they're ready, then we can, they can work with our staff to, to get that back on the agenda. So continue to, and date in the future.
Second.
Just a clarification. Have any back here, but.
There might be some staff online.
Is there any, are there any issues if this is delayed? At what point does that begin to be, have to be renoticed? Or I've had that discussion before, but I can't remember.
Nicole, you want to speak up on the noticing, please?
Oh, yes. If you continue to a date certain, we don't have to renotice. But if there's a non-specific date, we will have to renotice.
Okay. So three or four weeks?
We could probably make it two.
Okay. Well, here's another, another option. We can do this motion and say for a time certain in two weeks. The option would still be open to us to continue it again to a specified date. If the council needs more time, or if the developer wants more time.
Okay, yes.
I do have Steve Pasterek. It looks like he has his hand raised to maybe add something to that.
Thank you, Nicole. I would just say, yes, we could, as far as delaying, there's, we have, of course, next week is a fifth Tuesday. But so we could do either the seventh of December or the 14th. From, from a staff perspective, either of those would be, would be fine.
Okay, so shoot for the seventh, and if we need to change it?
Yeah.
All right. So my motion is to continue this until December 7th.
Second.
And just for clarification, since the ordinance did not pass, but there was no motion to deny it either. So it's still available for consideration. So this would be an entire continuation of application GPZ-14-2021 with the two ordinances and the one resolution. Is that correct?
And it sounds like.
That was a clarification that was unclear, you know, a few years ago, but we have been operating that. If a motion fails, the motion fails, but the issue or the reaction ordinance, whatever, is still before us and can still be acted upon.
Very good.
So the motion before us is to continue this to December 7th?
The second already.
Yeah, I know. I'm just restating the motion and no more comments. So we go to our city recorder.
Councilman Fatisa Manu.
Hi.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Buehler.
Hi.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Hi.
Motion for continuance passes unanimously.
Okay. So I assume we need to continue the other two to be consistent?
I thought we clarified that it was the entire application.
Oh, can we do all three?
Including both ordinances and, and the resolution.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, I guess we can, because we do that with our consent agenda, don't we? So we can, if, if the motion includes the same action on each of them. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. So, so that was for all three, and that was clear? Is that correct? All right. Then we're set. That took care of all three of them. So let's see, I need to get back down on the agenda here. Then we're going to eight resolutions, Resolution 21-190. Yeah. And this is a resolution expressing our support for the city's application for transportation and land use connection grant funding. This is for, they're applying for $36,000 from, I believe, well, from these funds. And it's consistent with the Wasatch Choice Vision. Our match is $4,000. This is to update our general plan since the last time we did it, which was in 2015. This is more than just some updates or changes. This is to do a wider review. That is the issue before us to the council.
Move to approve resolution 21-190.
Second.
It's properly before us. Seeing no, and hearing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Buehler.
Hi.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Fatisa Manu.
Hi.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have application PUD-3-2021 filed by Greg Larson. Final plat approval for the cottages at Pierce Farm, 6765 West, 3500 South. Here, they're proposing 65 units. And on 10 acres, these are, all fall within the general guidelines. And I believe that this is an administrative action just for our review. So I won't belabor that. I'll just stop there unless there's further comments.
Move for approval of PUD-3-2021.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fatisa Manu.
Hi.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Buehler.
Hi.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to our consent agenda. We do have a number of items on there. Eight items. And of those eight, because these are fairly routine items, we've done many similar before. The only one that's a little different is the first one under A, Resolution 21-191. But it's a public roadway easement with Rocky Mountain Power on Laurel Canyon Drive. And they have done this before. They retain ownership of the land, but they allow an easement for a road to go across it. B, which is 192, is one of the routine ones on 4700 South for purchase agreement, warranty deed, perpetual easement, temporary construction easement, those typical things. Then we have two, C and D, which are 193, 194, for safe sidewalks. And then the last four are in conjunction with sidewalks where we do the ADA requirements to change it from a curb to a slope. These are at the intersections, and we're gradually doing those. These are at the intersections and we're gradually doing those across the city. So those are the items. And by the way, those last four were one ninety five through one ninety eight. Just so they're on the record there.
Move to approve the eight items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Hearing no further comments, then to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Hi.
Councilman Buehler.
Hi.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Fatis Manu.
Hi.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We do not have a need for a closed session tonight. There are two items that I would just announce. The first one is, of course, that we will not be meeting next week on the traditional fifth Tuesday, which has been our practice. And so our next meeting will be December seventh. That's true for both our study meeting and our regular meeting here. And then second, because it is a holiday coming up, we certainly on behalf of the city council, as well as the city of West Valley, wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Be safe, enjoy the time together. And with that, our motion to end.
Motion to adjourn.
Without objection, then we will adjourn. And hearing no objection, we are adjourned and it was unanimous.